Okay, we'd like to open Mahoning County Commissioners Meeting Number Forty-Six, Thursday, December third, 2020. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty.
Wow, correct, Audrey. Alright, am I up there maybe? Nope, I'm nowhere.
It's on me now.
The camera's kind of going crazy going back and forth.
No, I think I'm, I'm like, I'm speaking. Oh, well.
See, it just went to you because you said you.
It just went to three of us.
Sure.
Who's this guy? Let this masked marauder in.
Take care of yourself. We're in the meeting.
Okay.
You want to sit up here and join us? Okay. Here we go.
All right, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of Board Meeting Number Forty-Five from Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, 2020, and approval of bills for payment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, Journal Entry Number One.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. See, agreements, clerk of courts.
Good morning, Commissioners and Nancy. This is a request for moving services with Cleland Brothers Moving for the purpose of moving case file boxes from Austintown Court and the Legal Department and relocating those to the Microfilm Department. Estimated amount of sixteen hundred dollars, and those are general funds.
All right, thanks. Continuum of care.
Commissioners, I'll take care of that. This is agreement with Catholic Charities Regional Agency for the merging of Homeless Management Information System in the amount of ten thousand dollars and it's non-general.
Convention and visitors, Linda.
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with AAA World Magazine for advertising next year, 2021. Hopeful that things will be much better then. I have to enter into this agreement now because they offered deeply discounted rates if you committed before the, you know, end of 2020, so I wanted to take advantage of that pricing.
Okay, good, thank you. Recycling.
Morning Commissioners, this is agreement with Coatesville Township Trustees to host our drop-off recycling site there for the residents and provide incidental, incidental support services there.
Thanks, Lou. All right, agreements.
Motion approved, agreements, letters A through D.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappagansy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, appointments. Commissioners, reappoint the following individuals to serve the Mahoning County Convention and Visitors Bureau effective January one, 2020, for two-year terms. Brian Tolanar, Paul Hegman, Katie Semenera, Deturo, Nancy Sullivan, Susan Moore, and Ken Beadley. Linda, anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, no, just thank the Commissioners for the reappointment. These are, um, we have a really great group of people on our board, easy to work with, and they've all agreed to stay on for another two years, which I'm thankful for, so thank you for the reappointment.
Okay, thank you, Linda. All right, on B, Commissioners, reappoint the following individuals to serve on the Mahoning County Planning Commission effective January one, 2021, for three years. Attorney Mark Fortunato and Mr. John McCarthy. All right, motions or approve appointments.
Motion approve appointments, A and D.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappagansy?
Yes.
Yes. All right, resolutions.
Motion approve resolutions, number one addition.
Second.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappagansy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. All right, resolution of award purchasing, James.
Good morning, everyone. This is a rebid for the Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing for Juvenile Justice. This is part of the overall roof replacement for the Juvenile Justice Center. It's for not only the MEP but also replacing their chillers, which are original equipment and no longer available for parts or the type of freon that's necessary to be replaced.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Motion for resolution of awards.
Motion approve, resolution of awards to A.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappagansy?
Yes.
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, O M B.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving addendums and expenditures with following agencies to assist with the COVID-19 public health and funded by the CARES Act in the following amounts. There is a reduction to Catholic charities for five hundred thousand, and that was for the rent and mortgage program. We originally gave, allocated one point five million towards that due to the timing of the end of the year and this being cut off. They're not going to utilize the funds, so we're going to reallocate those funds so that they can be used before the end of the year. We talked to the agency and that was their recommendation.
So they're going back to Catholic charities?
No, this is coming, they're going down to a million.
Okay, then the rest comes back.
Comes back to the county, yes.
So what if companies are still applying?
The people, they still have it. They had spent, by the time when we talked to them about three hundred thousand, they still had seven hundred thousand, and they're taking applications and people, yes, still can apply.
Okay.
So where, what would we reallocate to?
Right now, we're gonna, MCBDD, I was gonna do some things with the, the agencies and stuff that they work with, and that's a hundred thousand's gonna go back to there. We have also Mental Health Recovery Board, some public service announcements with the Commissioners will be.
We have the gap to fill on sheriffs.
And then from that, we will be looking at other things, and then there's some things that we'll take care of with inside the county too.
Did we, um, did we buy equipment like the hand sanitizers for the MCDD schools?
The Klenitz Current School, yes.
We did, and that is really the only school that's.
Yes.
You mean the hand washing stations?
And we, through your last resolution, we were able to do one for the Boys and Girls Club, too.
Good.
So, and I talked to Personal Protective and they've done that, and they've already entered into those agreements and everything, so pretty much they used up all the dollars for those.
Okay, okay, thanks, Audrey.
Yeah.
B, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Linda. Linda, you're talking, we can't hear you. Do you?
Unmute.
Sorry, that's the buzzword for 2020, right? Unmute. Letters B and C are resolutions to adopt revisions to both our bylaws and our code of regulations. We review these other few years to ensure everything is in compliance with Ohio Revised Code and to ensure all of our operations are, are defined properly within these documents. There were no major revisions to be made, just cleaned up a few sections as, again, clarified actual operations of the Bureau. And on November eighteenth, the CBB Advisory Board did review all of these revisions and approved them pending your approval today.
All right, thank you, Linda. Human Resources.
Morning Commissioners, this is a resolution, putting another addendum on the Personnel Handbook due to the pandemic. This one is for alternative work arrangements for the employees.
And the, the handbook's on the website as well, too, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, thank you. O M B Grants.
Commissioners, this resolution is in trend to a memorandum of understanding with Coatesville Township in the amount of ten thousand four hundred fourteen dollars for compensation for incident command. This was during, during the initial hike of the pandemic, and it's the expertise we received at that time.
Okay, Sheriff's Department. We have, uh, Capa Bianca with us.
No, you actually have the sheriff.
We have Sheriff Green. Where's he at? He can't be seen.
There he is.
Can't see me?
There you are. Sheriff, how are you, sir?
Wonderful, how are you?
Sheriff, I happen to have something that I know that I could bribe you with, that I picked up over the weekend. It happens to be a cherry nut.
Oh.
That I got for you from Monars.
That's my so favorite.
I'm telling you, I'm gonna buy you, I'm gonna buy you a pound of butter to bring it over with the colochi for you, so.
Oh, that's wonderful, wonderful. Are we, are we on F now?
Yes, we are.
Yes, you are.
All right, uh, this memorandum of understanding is for a one-time hazardous duty payment for the employees at the Mahoning County Sheriff's Office. It's a fifteen-dollar hazard, or fifteen, it's a fifteen hundred dollar hazardous duty payment. These monies are coming out of the Justice Fund originally, however, it's important to note that these monies are being replenished at the Sheriff's Office through the CARES Act funding.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, Sheriff. All right, motion to approve resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, A through F.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappagansy?
Yes.
See? Look at that. Did you see that?
It hasn't slipped to you yet?
Oh, it won't. Sabotaging night, Mike.
It's trying to see you. Clap your hands, Carol, see if that'll come your way.
We, um.
Dave and Anthony.
We have that.
I must tell the public that when you.
So all we can say, Mike, is everything is working fine, correctly? Everything's working fine. All right, call for the good of the order. Anybody elected, department heads like to comment or say anything? Sheriff, anything? Lou? Is everybody unmuted?
They can unmute themselves.
Okay, anybody have any comments or?
Questions, concerns, problems?
We have several callers.
I can, I, I can comment this weekend. It, it was really great seeing all the law enforcement that came out to deliver those CARES Act packages, uh, to the families across Mahoning County that were selected. I think it was absolutely awesome. It was just hundreds of vehicles. The officers were all out there, none of them were getting paid, they were all doing it on their own time, and, uh, it was, uh, it was really a nice thing because we've had to change a lot on how we do things. You know, we, we spoke before about Thanksgiving, how, uh, you know, normally the senior services thing that we've always done, we had to cancel that, but, uh, that was really a great thing this weekend that the, the Commissioners supported, took part in, and, uh, it was really awesome.
Sheriff, thank you. You know, we, we really commend your department and, and Joe Iberus Jr. for orchestrating that, putting it together with the FOPs in Mahoning County, and, you know, the Commissioners are grateful that we were able to, you know, divert the CARES funding in that direction so that so many different political subdivisions were able to be taken care of, and, and not only through the FOPs but through the, the school system that they worked with to make sure they were identifying the correct, you know, group of people that needed the assistance and the aid, and, you know, so from all of the FOPs in Mahoning County, Sheriff's Department, you know, ta- taking the lead in this and working with the school systems and, you know, was, you're, you're right, it was really heartwarming for all those individuals to be able to participate and to assist people that were truly in need, so thank you, Sheriff. Please, you know, pass along our, our thanks to Joe Iberus Jr. All right, anybody else?
Commissioner?
Yes, please.
I would just like to encourage the public, you know, it, it's a different year, our holiday season is going to be different, but on our social media and a blog posted to our website, we have twelve days to still love this holiday season with suggestions and, and things like shopping local to help our local businesses, that's so important this holiday season, ordering carryout from a local restaurant, patronizing our local bakeries for your Christmas sweets and treats, things to do with the family that are safe, like possibly cutting down your own live Christmas tree. We have a listing of drive-through holiday lights where you can, you know, safely in your car view the holiday lights and get in the spirit. There are some things that you can watch from home, virtual performances. Jim Brickman is always very popular during the holiday season. Standby Auditorium will be streaming his performance. Our annual Miracle on Easy Street will be able to be viewed for several days on television, so you can check out the virtual event schedule. Oh Wow has some at-home experiments you can do with the young ones in your house. Mahoning Valley Historical Society has holiday crafts, the Public Library has programs, all of these things you can do safely from home, alternative ways to still love this very, very different holiday season.
Can I say something? Note on that?
Sure.
You know, Linda, that's very good that you do that to buy local. I just want to tell you one thing, if you could order your Christmas gifts at our local mall, at our stores at our mall, and, and anywhere else in Mahoning County or even Trumbull County, wherever you, you, whatever you want to buy, first look at.
Carol, you're on the screen.
At the, first look at the local areas before you go online and order from another area online, like Amazon, I mean, I see the trucks everywhere, and I'm not saying anything about Amazon, but what I'm saying is if you could go to Macy's or Penny's or H and M or Kohl's or, or Walmart or Target, you know, that's the important part.
How are you?
I'm good. How about you?
Anybody that's on the dial then, can you mute your phones, please? Thank you.
But anyway, I agree with that, Linda, because we need to keep our businesses here. We need to keep, uh, stores in our area busy at this holiday season. I mean, and I know a lot of them have curbside, Penny's does, I think Macy's does, they all do, so please try to buy here before you go online and buy from a company that is not in Mahoning or Trumbull or Columbiana Counties. We need to support our local businesses, especially now.
Yes, absolutely. We need these local businesses to still be around when travelers and visitors return to our community. You know, you're looking for candy for stocking stuffers, we've got great local candy companies. Like I said, the bakeries, things like that for your sweet treats. And also don't forget our local nonprofits. If you're looking for year-end donations, you know, they've all been so drastically affected by this pandemic, but, you know, there are many, many ways to show kindness to our local nonprofits. If you're looking to donate for your end-of-the-year donations, please consider that as well.
And Dave, you did that, you bought so many things from Monars, and that's a local, a local company, so, I mean, I, I'm very much.
And the hand washing stations, local manufacturer.
I mean, we need to, we really need to, we need to help our local businesses, our small businesses. We, we definitely, with God's will, will end up out of this in a couple months, three to six months, and we're gonna have to have those places open and ready for us, so, thank you, Linda.
Okay, excellent. Anyone else like to make a comment? Anyone? Pat, Lou, anybody? All good?
He didn't have anything on.
All right, well, then I will open it up for questions. If there's anyone on that is from the public or just has a question they'd like to address the Commissioners with, and we will open it up for comments as well. Anyone out there? Okay, then I would turn it over, and Audrey, anything that you'd like to add? You know, you still out checking the census?
I was just gonna say.
Still walking door-to-door counting heads?
Oh, I, so important.
It is very.
We had a good conversation straightening me up.
Conversation about the census with Commissioner Chappagansy yesterday. Now, the census is kind of wrapping up, and hopefully our federal government will do what is consistent practice through the last, how many years, and it will do the right thing with the census.
And, and I do want to say that the county is wrapping up on our CARES Act funding.
We're trying to make sure we tie up any loose ends. Anything that's not being spent is bringing, bringing back into the county. We will follow the rules, regulations, as far as how those excess funds will be used to make sure that Mahoning County benefits from it, so we're appreciative for the federal government for sending it out, and we would hope that they would do some kind of an extension or additional funding so that some of the things like mortgage relief and support to small businesses will actually go on into twenty twenty-one, at least the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, but, um, we don't know that. So right now, we are at a deadline of December thirtieth first extending the funds, and that's when we will meet.
Thank God, excellent, thank you, Audrey. Carol?
Well.
You look nice.
Thank you.
Like all your gold. That's a pretty watch, yeah, I like that watch.
Thank you.
Is that, is that like a fancy dancy one, or is?
No, actually, um.
Is that a Rolex?
No, it's a Caravella.
It's a Rolex.
Caravelle.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's. I didn't like. Anyway, that's really off the track here, but, um, and these were all bought local, Kamara Jewelry.
There's no doubt in my mind you support the jewelry stores.
I do.
And the clothing stores.
I support all business in Mahoning County, and if I were to buy, if I look online and somebody asks me that, like, in a gift exchange for a family event, that they want something and then where it's at, I first go to the local stores and I call them up and I ask for that department, and I say, "Do you have this item?" "Yes." "Okay, here's my charge, have it delivered to my house." Perfect, done, bought right here at Penny's and Macy's, Kohl's, I've used them all, so, you know, that's, I still go to the grocery store very quickly, walk-in, walk-out, I never go to the self-checkouts. I mean, I go right to the place where the people are working so they don't lose their jobs, and I think most of us do that. I don't think I'm the only one in this room that does that. I go to the bank, I want to see my teller in person, see how she's doing or he's doing, keep them working. We are the ones that control the industry. We do that, we control because we're the buyers, so with God's will, people will do that, money's gonna be tight this year, you know, so just do a homemade Christmas, like some of us are doing, cookies and things that you drop off on the porch.
Bracio.
Absolutely.
So now I'll get on my other subject, which I, I, I talk about every meeting, and I'm gonna say it again, please, this pandemic is not going away anytime soon. Actually, we may, we're seeing increases. Why is that? Because people are moving out, they're going out of their, out of their, their circle, they're going out, if you look at the, the roads everywhere, they're going out and do their shopping and do everything that way, I mean, it's fine to go shopping, but please wear a mask, please wash your hands, please stay self-distanced, and if you see there's a crowd, don't go in yet, wait in the car till you see that it's like a lighter crowd, then go in and do what you have to do, and have an or, have your order written down so that when you do go in, you know exactly what you need to buy and come out. All we need to do is hang tight like this until at least February. That's not saying you can't be with your inner circle, with your family, try not to travel, I mean, we need to really pay attention, and I gotta commend, I have to commend Governor DeWine, I really do. I mean, I would stand up for him anywhere. I mean, this man has put his career and everything on the line, he has not looked at party lines, whether you're a D and R and I, he has worked for all us Ohioans, and he has worked very hard to keep us safe. We need to pay attention to what his lead is. He should have been the one in charge of Washington, and we wouldn't probably be here right now, but what I'm saying is he, he's done a fine job, I commend him on that, and if he ever needed anyone to speak for him, I'm here for this issue, seriously, and I think we all are. Dave, you're on calls with him all the time, you and Anthony, I mean, I, I mean, this guy is, I can't say enough, I support him a hundred percent. Thank you. And thank everybody for the CARES Act, Audrey, Anna, Jimmy, Nancy, and everybody that's online here that's worked very hard, Jerry Green with the food, food and giveaways, gifts for the families. The most important thing in the world is to make young children happy at the holiday through all of this pandemic stuff, and the poor people that we would not have think, would not think that are there, are there now because of the job loss, so please, thank you, and thank you to your staff and all the police departments and the City of Youngstown and Robin Lees and, and everybody out there, so.
Thanks, Colonel.
Thank you.
Anthony?
I, I agree with Carol, and, you know, it's funny, there's some state legislator in Cincinnati's trying to impeach our governor only because he's trying to keep us safe, and I have to hand it to Mike DeWine and his administration for doing a yeoman's job. Since this pandemic began, he gave us updates through his health director, he's been on phone calls with Dave and myself and Carol, so I think he's done the best job of letting the counties know what's happening and providing assistance. I want to thank the sheriff and the FOP for what they are doing to delivering meals to those who are most needy. Jerry and his deputies have always stepped up for the cause, and we really appreciate what he did to assist us. And thirdly, I want to congratulate Pastor Harrison for renaming of Lincoln Street to Union Baptist.
Oh.
It's on their hundred years of service, and they had a ceremony last week, and they got the street renamed, and it was very emotional and very passionate, so I want to congratulate the Saints of Union Baptist for getting that done, and the City of Youngstown, Mayor, Mayor Brown for making that happen. Oh, and remember, give to your local charities, buy local, like Carol said, it all helps, we're all in this together, nobody can do it alone.
How come they didn't name the street after Carol there?
That could happen.
After Carol.
Right.
Carol's Prior Hill Pizza. Carol's Bracio.
Remilio.
There you go.
There you go. Agati.
Yes, um, you know, definitely a different time that we're going through, and so many things that we do normally these times of year, this time of year, that is, you know, pretty commonplace for us, and, you know, like shop with the cop and the different things that are set up and that have all changed, you know, because of the situation we're in, but the need has not changed, it's grown, you know, that's how it's changed, and, you know, so many people out there are trying to pick up the slack and, and trying to assist in some way, shape, or form, and, you know, and many of us have an opportunity to join in, and I know, like Carol and Anthony talked about, you know, the Sheriff's Department and the different entities, the veterans and the food drives and the, and the assistance by the police officers, and, you know, we've tried to step in with CARES dollars to try and boost up, you know, those opportunities for them to provide more for the ones that need it the most. I know there's Annie Hall, you know, that's on the east side of Youngstown that, you know, forever that gives away coats, and she's had some health problems, and she continues to persevere and to try and assist the people in Youngstown. Nick Phillips and his wife Laura have their own nonprofit organization that help the kids in Campbell, you know, and we try to provide small dollars to their entities through the CARES Act so that they could maintain, because normally they raise money to try and provide, and the opportunities for fundraisers have diminished and, you know, really been replaced, so it's been very difficult for them to do things, and we've been able to assist in some small way to provide that opportunity to continue. I know that the, the shop with the cop, you know, there's some communities that, that it's still going on, the United Way is assisting, and, and please, like, I think Audrey said, if you want to make a donation, an excellent opportunity through the United Way, because they continue to try and help people. I have to agree with my colleagues as well with Governor DeWine. You know, never before have I had an opportunity to be on the phone with the sitting governor every other week, and be able to voice my concerns, or our concerns on behalf of the county and the county commissioners, and, you know, he has given us that, that interactive dialogue, to be able to give him our local feelings and him express his, along with Lieutenant Governor Houston, you know, they've really opened the door to communications from the seven metro counties, of which Mahoning County is one of, and, you know, it's, it seems like that when you try to throw politics away and just work on behalf of the people that need it, you know, people like Governor DeWine has stepped up to the plate and done that, and there's been numerous opportunities, I've said, when, you know, they wanted to impeach him the first time around, and they wanted to file impeachments again, and I jokingly made those comments to him on the phone, and, you know, he, he just is, is so passionate about helping and sincere in his dialogue and his conversation that, you know, he, he just says, you know, "Let them take their best shot." You know, "I'm doing what I think is the right thing to do on behalf of the, the people in the state of Ohio," and, you know, and, and he gets, he gets input from a lot of different counties, commissioners, and he listens to everyone, Ds, Rs, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to say, he knows me by name now, you know, and I always just say, "Ditzler from Mahoning County," and, and it's funny, because when he addresses me, he goes, "Ditzler from Mahoning County," you know, he's the, he's the same way, but he's a good person, he's sincere in his efforts, and God bless him, you know, for taking all the heat that he has. It's sad that people that, who try to do the right thing, whether they're governors, Republican governors, or Democratic governors in the state, whether they're confirming election results, or trying to help the pandemic. It's sad that nationally, you know, we throw stones at these people, and we try to bring them down politically, and if you see, if you watch the national news, they're threatening their lives personally, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's a sad, sad state of affairs when, you know, you don't respect the authority, the people in charge, the people that are trying to help all of us, and believe me, you know, the, the governors of the state, they don't have a patent on good ideas like we don't, and everybody is going through this, you know, as a situation that's never been done before, never been seen before, you know, God bless our police officers, our firefighters, our frontline healthcare workers, I mean, those are the people that have, that have really, you know, put their life on the line. You know, how would you like to get a call from, you know, or have somebody, you know, just pass out from a heart attack and call 911, and, and you're, have to respond to it, and you don't know what situation you're walking into? You know, the first responders are usually, the fire department gets there first, and they're dealing with people, they don't know if they have COVID, you know, we have so many of our firemen that are off and sick in the county, you know, from being exposed, so, I mean, so many people have done a great job on all of our behalf, you know, let's make sure that we do everything we can to help someone during this holiday season, you know, whether it be someone that's out of work, someone in need, or just your neighbor that's a police officer, firefighter, an E M T, you know, you know, healthcare worker, you know, God bless them for being able to get their shots first, and then the most vulnerable in nursing homes getting their shots on it, so hopefully, you know, that continues, and, and we take care of the most susceptible and the most vulnerable, so do what, do what you can to, to assist in some way, shape, or form. Okay. Anything else? Good? All right, I thank everybody, appreciate all their hard work. Our next board meeting is Thursday, December 10th, at 10:00 a.m., same bat time, same bat station. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.